Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District. This meeting is officially called to order on Tuesday, March 21st at 7:01 PM. Trustees present are Trustee Adams, Trustee Correa, Trustee Hodges, Trustee Durant, Trustee Jensen, Trustee Newhouse, and Trustee McDaniel. I would like to ask everyone to please silence your cell phones or electronic devices. Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Trustee Adams, our Vice President and Chairman of our Equity Committee, to read the district's equity statement.
Thank you, Madam President. Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do.
Thank you, Trustee Adams. Now, the award-winning Spring Naval JROTC will lead tonight's presentation of colors. Commanding the color guard and carrying the United States flag is Cadet Michaela Marks. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Genesis Calles. The United States Guard Lieutenant Natalia Banay. The Texas Rifle Guard is Cadet Captain Carolyn Vini. And that's Natalia Rivera. Leading the pledge tonight is Cadet Lieutenant Cassidy Lane. The Spring Naval JROTC program is under the direction of Master Chief Mark Clark. And at this time, if everyone will please rise. For work, march, up, 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 right, 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 up, up, color guard, halt. Freezing, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Antifa Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Ready, colors. Ready, cut. Post the colors, march. March. Base. Base. If you can remain standing, I'd like to ask those present to please quietly observe a moment of silence in your own way. Thank you, you may be seated. Our next item this evening is our superintendent's remarks. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our super proud Superintendent, Dr. Lapita Inahosa.
Thank you, Mr. Durant, and members of the board, those that are here with us tonight, present, and those that are online watching us. It's been a great two days back. Want to welcome everyone back from spring break. Hopefully, everyone had the opportunity to get a little bit of rest, some relaxation, spend some time with family and friends. But we are ready to get started and finish the year strong. So lots of things that are happening in the district and our board and everyone here today. You're going to hear a little bit more about our Tri Club. This is our annual livestock show, and I see some princesses here. So we're going to hear a lot more about that coming up. But I do want to give everyone the heads up that it does begin here, coming right around the corner, April 14th through the 16th. And this gives the opportunity for our students that are in our agricultural programs, have the opportunity to show the work that they've been doing, whether they've been raising animals, whether they've been working with plants, whatever their particular project has been, this is an opportunity for us to feature their work, their year-long efforts in their involvement in either the Future Farmers of America, the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, the Spring 4H program, all of them will come together April 14th through the 16th. And then, that April 16th is actually a Saturday. That's the most, I think, exciting day of all because we do have an auction where you can come out and bid on the animals. And so here in Spring ISD, we're running our superintendent's, our annual superintendent's stampede. The challenge for us this year is to collect $25,000 so that we may be able to purchase these animals. The children, the young people, will use the money for their scholarships and/or to continue in the program in future years. So asking everyone for donations, go to our website, www.springisd.org/stampede, and please make your pledges, your donations to our project. And today, if any of you have been in any of our social media, you probably saw this. We had an amazing morning out at Decane High School. Huge surprise for everyone, but not really a surprise. We have some amazing students in Spring ISD. And so this morning, a young man, his name is Aaron Hernandez, he's the class of 2023 Wildcats. He'll be graduating this May, was awarded a $100,000 scholarship. Y'all heard me right, $100,000. That is amazing. And he, this scholarship was provided the generosity of APQC, and that is actually a local organization, American Productivity and Quality Center, which is based here in Houston. Aaron was awarded the scholarship based on financial need. They focus on financial need. Now, on top of that, Aaron also has a 4.0 GPA, just saying, right? Just saying. And he wants to go to university in Portland, Oregon, and it is...
Lewis and Clark.
Lewis and Clark University, can you believe that? Portland, Oregon. So we're already preparing him for the rain and the cold weather up there. But we're just so very excited and so very proud. And this is just getting us warmed up for our graduations that will be coming up and all of our seniors that right now have applied for colleges and universities are getting their acceptance letters and then, of course, their scholarships. And just want to once again do a big shout out to our Robertson Middle School, just again, putting it back on everyone's radar, that we do have our Robertson Middle School that was rated number 10 by Children at Risk on the list of the top 15 best middle schools in the region. So we are rated number 10, just to continue to celebrate. I know we have some Robertson students and Robertson teachers here that are going to be speaking and being presented later on during our meeting. But just to once again congratulate our staff at Robertson, our administrators, and our families and parents that continue to support the school. It is also a 2020 Blue Ribbon, National Blue Ribbon School. And so just again, to showcase all the great work that our students do, and you'll see a lot of Robertson students participating in our Tri Club event coming up in April. And so just more great news for you to follow. I know I saw Ms. Carol walking around, Ms. Trinita Carroll, our Executive Director of Family and Community Engagement. This Saturday, we are holding our Girls Empowerment Summit. It will be at Decane High School, and this is our third annual, where we bring our young ladies from middle school and high school, and they participate in a full-day conference with different breakout sessions, learning about social media, learning about college, financial literacy, lots of opportunities. And this year, our feature is credible lineup, but I have to tell you, one of the speakers is Brianna Connor from ABC 13 News. We also have our very own trustee, Ms. Newhouse, that will be teaching our students etiquette lessons. So just want to, you know, have all of you all, if you haven't registered, you have a young lady that's in middle school or high school, please register and bring them out to Decane. We end the morning, the day, with a full- plated meal. So we have that experience of sitting down and having steak and potatoes and a salad, and how do we, you know, participate? How do we eat in this formal setting? So it's an amazing event. So this is for our young ladies, and don't worry, our young men, you're coming up in April, so we'll get you too. And just to close out for our board, I've got just two announcements that I want to share, leadership announcements. And I know you probably have seen it on our website, but do want to recognize our brand-new principal at Ponderosa Elementary, and this is Ms. Florabella Reyna. Ms. Reyna, will you stand, please come up? And I know our board knows this, but just for everyone here, Ms. Reyna is one of our very own, started here, did a lot of work, but has been a teacher, a specialist, an assistant principal, and in our leadership pipeline, just left Link Elementary, was there as their assistant principal, and we are just very excited to recognize her and ask her to say a few words.
Good evening. Like I say, I had been with the district for seven years. I was at Link. I started as an instructional specialist, a literacy coach, academic specialist, EB coordinator as well, and then AP for the last two years. I have lived in the community for the last 16 years. My son went to Reynos Elementary, I was a PTA mom at Reynos, then he went to Robertson, and now he's at Winchee High School. I'm really excited for the opportunity that you're giving me to work at Ponderosa. I know that we're going to accomplish lots of things. I do believe in collaboration, and that's what I'm trying to do right now with my community. But thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have any family with you you'd like to recognize?
Ms. Reyna's Reyna's? I know you have your husband here and your son. Will they please stand and be recognized? And I also want to recognize, and I know our community and our board has heard us say this, that once you join the Spring ISD family, you're always in Spring. And we always, or I like to kid and say, we put an ankle monitor. So if you ever leave, we make you come back. And we want to celebrate and recognize our new Assistant Superintendent of Research, Accountability, and Testing. And I'd like to, I know she is here, Ms. Ramonda Ale... I'm going to make sure I say this right, Ale Loye. Did I get that right, Ms. Ramonda? Come on up here. And so Ms. Ale Loye worked with us, was with us in special education, what, like six years ago? And went and traveled the world and worked with TEA, and we said, it's time for you to come back. And so we are very excited to welcome her back to Spring ISD.
So thank you, Dr. Inahosa, board members. I'm really excited to rejoin the Spring family. And my daughter, two of my daughters actually went to Spring previously. Spring has always had a special place in my heart. And so as soon as I had the opportunity to come back to Spring, I really wanted to rejoin the team. During my travels around the world, as Dr. Inahosa called it, I started out as a special education teacher, teaching resource, EOL, as well as an inclusion teacher, a behavior teacher, I'm an educational diagnostician, I've been a special education program director. During my time at the Texas Education Agency, I was a state director who worked on the revamping of the results-driven accountability system, as well as the continuous improvement system, and the differentiated monitoring and support system, as well as the dyslexia monitoring system. So I am a very systems-oriented person, and so I'm hoping that I'm able to bring those experiences here to the Spring family and increase outcomes for all students. So thank you for the opportunity.
Her title, official title, is our Assistant Superintendent of Research, Accountability, and Testing.
Well, we'd like to say welcome home.
Yes.
I don't know if you have any family you want to recognize, or you're here with your Spring family.
It was my Spring family. My daughters are at home, and they were like, well, the last time you stayed for a board meeting, you didn't get home till after. We're trying to do better. Yeah, we're staying.
So we are just delighted, excited to have Ramonda back in the district, and, you know, her support and her knowledge and skills around accountability is, I know, going to be a great asset for us here in the district, as well as all of her experience in special education. And so I think both individuals, Ms. Reyna is, we are thrilled to have her at Ponderosa, and know the community is already excited to have her there. So we welcome these two individuals. Ms. Durant, that concludes our, my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. And at this time, I'd now like to recognize any of my trustees or colleagues who would like to make remarks at this time.
I just wanted to share an event that I'm looking forward to this week, and that is, there's going to be a Spring Choir concert Thursday night at 7:00 at Spring High. And I can't tell you how much fun I love these events. So if you want to have a little extra fun Thursday night, come on over to Spring High
Well, Dr. Inahosa has spoken for me, and that I'm looking forward to participating at our Girls Summit this weekend. So if your daughter has not signed up for the Girls Summit, I invite them to come to the etiquette classes on this Saturday. I'm happy to do this, and I must tell you, Dr. Inahosa, the young men that you see sitting in the black and gold with us tonight, I have done an etiquette workshop for their scholarship recipients, young men, for 15 years now, they're telling me. And I think we have a good time in those classes. So, young ladies, I'm looking forward to seeing each of you this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to remind everybody out there, the legislative session is in full swing. There's some important bills on vouchers being heard tomorrow in the Senate Education Committee, and it's important that we let our legislators know where your stances on these bills. This past week, Trustee McDaniel and I attended the Texas Caucus of Black School Board Members' Education Summit, and Representative Ron Reynolds was there, talking about the importance of people from the community showing up at the committee hearings. Even if we believe it's a foregone conclusion that these bills are going to pass, it's important to get our voices on the record so that there will be a record that there was opposition or favor for any of the particular pieces of legislation. So I just want to encourage people, if they have the time, to just pay attention to what's happening in Austin, because that is what really impacts your life.
And I will add, Trustee Adams mentioned showing up and using your voice. We'll talk about it a bit later when we get to our community updates for our community committee. But thank you to everyone who has come out thus far for our building bridges with the board, community members, and for staff members who came out to chat with us at the teacher table talks. As representatives of the community, it's important for us to hear from the community, to engage with you all, to know, to make the most informed decisions based on your desires for the district and what you would like to see. And so that's just the first of many initiatives that we are going to put into play so that we can keep a pulse on how everyone is feeling and what your desires for our district. So just want to say thank you for coming to engage with us, and invite anyone else to come out whenever you see an upcoming event like that.
Thank you. Thank you. So I was going to go there, so I'll piggyback just a little bit. Building Bridges with the Board gave us an opportunity to collaborate with our senior leadership team on specific topics that was selected by the community. And so we have sort of a roundtable, and every 10 minutes, they change tables. We've received a lot of great feedback, which we are now analyzing and putting forth some strategic action plans and some things in place to address that. So we're really excited. I also want to thank our Community Engagement Committee, led by Trustee Hodges, for that building bridges with the board, and our table talks for our staff as well. I also want to talk about our fun run that we had earlier this month. It was a great time to come out. It was at our stadium, which was really exciting, and it was, in addition, we had a health fair all at the same time, and it was really good to see all of our stakeholders and our community come out and support that health fair as well as our fun run. And so I just want to say thank you to the district and administration for a great event. And then I also had an opportunity to attend our Emerge six annual luncheon this month as well, which is really excited, exciting because we have an opportunity for our students to get great support and attend some of our more prestigious universities, as well as they provide them support all the way through their four years while they're there to ensure their success along the way. And so we've had some really great scholars go through that Emerge program. We've participated in it for six years, and we're really excited about continuing to do that moving forward. And so with that, I'd like to make sure I don't have any other colleagues that have any other comments before we move on. So thank you. So next, I'd like to continue tonight's agenda with one of our most favorite parts of the evening, and that is our spotlight and recognition. So at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Inahosa and my colleagues to join me in the horseshoe.
Madam President, trustees, Dr. Inahosa, administration, and audience, we begin our recognitions this evening with district spotlights, starting with our Academic Decathlon winners. The United States Academic Decathlon is a program that provides high school students with an opportunity to experience the challenges of rigorous academic competition through participation in team activities. The Academic Decathlon is designed to include students from all academic levels. Each nine-member team consists of three A students, also called honors, three B students, called scholastic, and three C students, varsity. This competition consists of 10 events: art, economics, literature, music, science, social science, mathematics, essay, interview, and speech. This year, a total of 19 teams from six rounding districts competed in this competition over the course of two days in January. Three Spring ISD high schools participated in this year's competition, Early College Academy, Westfield High School, and Winchee High School. This evening, we would like to recognize our Academic Decathlon team members and coaches for their commitment, participation, and achievement. We are excited to announce Spring ISD schools received awards in three events. When I call your name, please come up to the podium so you can be recognized. First, we would like to spotlight Tony Mario Alvarado Reyes, 10th grade student from Early College Academy and representing advanced academics and multilingual. Tony Mario received first place in the essay portion of the competition. Let's give him a round of applause. Next, we would like to spotlight Gracie Des Hong, 11th grade student from Winchee High School for receiving second place in the interview portion of the competition. Gracie is unable to be here this evening. She is a full-time student and works part-time. Let's give her a round of applause for her efforts and success. Also representing Winchee High School, Carl Armandi, 11th grade student who received second place in the essay portion of the competition. We would like to recognize and congratulate all of our students for their accomplishments. And a special thank you to our Academic Decathlon coaches for your commitment and continued support of our students, Daniel Cook, Early College Academy, and Tara George, Winchee High School. Please stand so that you can be recognized. We'd also like to recognize Dominique Brown, High School GT Specialist, for her leadership in this event. She here, see? In addition, we would like to thank Christine Guidry, Principal of Early College Academy, and Dr. Alfred James, Principal of Winchee High School, for their participation and And we're going to go ahead and take a photo, yeah, we're going to take a photo. If there are any parents, if you want to come forward and take a photo with your cell phone, you're welcome to do that now if you'd like. All right, let's all get in here. All right, let's all get in here. Parents, come on, come on over here, come on over. I just get our parents, we're going to take a photo. Okay, our next spotlight, the Spring ISD Academic UIL Third Annual Competition engaged elementary grades two through five and middle school students in expanding their subject knowledge. This event creates a pathway for elementary and middle school students to participate and excel in similar academic UIL events in high school. This year, based on student voice obtained through a survey at the end of last year's event, we expanded the number of events for students to participate in and included art, chess puzzle, dictionary skills, impromptu speaking, mathematics, music memory, and number sense. A total of eleven elementary schools participated in the competition, and that included Benneke, Booker, Clark, Heritage, Oylund, Jenkins, Link, Major, Mayer, Northgate Crossing, and Smith. All Spring ISD middle schools participated in the Academic UIL competition as well this year. We would like to recognize Booker Elementary for the most, twenty-nine students who have participated in the Academic UIL competition. Our spotlight this evening celebrates students who were awarded first, second, or third place in the art, chess puzzle, and impromptu speaking categories. Students, when I call your name, please come forward. In the art category, from Booker Elementary, 4th grade student Delilah Arciga. Booker coach was Maria Matthews. GT coordinator was Carmisia Quincy, and principal, Raquisha Womack. And 5th grade, from Link Elementary, coming in first place as well, Camila Caro. Also from Link is Giselle Valderas. Like to recognize their coach, Chelsea Johnston, and GT coordinator, Chelsea Johnson, and principal, Tangy Stiff. Next category is chess puzzle, 2nd through 3rd grades. Zaire Butler, from Major Elementary, first place. Got a fan club over there, all right. Coaches are Teresa Johnson, Manos, and Latoya Gaines. GT coordinator is Thibaly Pipkins. And of course, our principal, Kenesha Williams. Also, we have in the chess puzzle category, taking first place as well, in 4th and 5th grades, Ellie Carillo, from Heritage Elementary. Our Heritage coach is Natasha McNeese, and GT coordinator is Shaquasha Barnes, with principal, Dr. Trent Russell. And our last category is impromptu speaking. That's a tough one. 6th through 8th grades, from Roberson Middle School, Angie Rahim Cohen. Roberson coach? Anj, okay. I think it was misspelled on here, all right. So coaches are Brandi Fontenot, and the GT coordinator is Katara White, with principal Cecilia Bron. Also in impromptu speaking, from Roberson is Denaya Kaufman, in first place. And for the School of International Studies at BAML, we have Nidia Cornish, got second place in impromptu speaking. And from Student Leadership Academy, taking 3rd place is Caitlin Nelson. And lastly, taking 3rd place from the School of International Studies at BAML is Hasuni At this time, I'd like to thank our Academic UIL coaches, GT coordinators, parents, principals, and families. Also, a huge thanks to our GT specialist Caitlin Getz and Christopher Sosa for their leadership in organizing a successful event. Congratulations to our students, coaches, GT coordinators, principals, parents, families, and friends. A special thank you to the Spring 9th Grade Center for their hospitality and serving as the host site for this event.
All right. Congratulations for our students.
Yeah, parents come on up here. Can we squeeze in just a little bit? There we go. I need everyone to look at this camera first, though. We're going to say this is for the website, so let's all take a look at this camera here first.
All right, guys, here we go.
And I'll go out of the way with the parents.
One, two, three. Hang on just a second. We're going to do one more. Here we go, on three. One, two, three.
Okay, stay where you are, and parents, take some photos here. Give the tags, please. Okay, moving on, tonight, we would like to take this opportunity to tell you about our Tri-Club Queen's Court. The Spring Tri-Club Pageant was open to female students in the 3rd through 12th grades who live within the Spring ISD boundaries, and were members in good standing of a Spring ISD FFA, FCCLA, or Spring 4H organization. We'd like to introduce this year's Tri-Club Court, invite these students to come up. Katara Motley, from Spring Livestock Show Fair Queen. There's a queen. Is she here? All right, come on up here. Eliza Briscoe, Junior Fair Queen. Give her a round of applause. And Jordan Harold, Fair Princess. The young ladies will share what participation in Tri-Club means to them, share their future goals, and extend a special invitation for the Board of Trustees to attend the 72nd Annual Spring Livestock Show and Fair, April 13th through the 15th. I would also like to recognize the Spring Tri-Club Pageant sponsor, Ms. Claudia Zimmer.
Good evening. My name is Katara Motley. I am the Spring Livestock Show Fair Queen. I am a senior at Spring High School, and this will be my fourth year in FFA.
My name is Eliza Briscoe, the Junior Fair Queen, and I am a sophomore at Spring High School. This is my second year in FFA. This year, I will be participating in the Creative Arts Show at the Spring Livestock Show with my projects of faux-stained glass and banana brownies.
Hi, my name is Jordan Harold, and I'm this year's Fair Princess. This is my second year in FFA. I will be showing ISD at this year's Spring Livestock Show and Fair.
The Spring Livestock Show, also known as Tri-Club, is the local livestock show and fair that promotes practical skills in agriculture and family consumer sciences. This is an organization where students from FFA, FCCLA, 4H are able to exhibit projects they have worked on from livestock, food, paintings, photography, and more.
The Spring Livestock Show also benefits students in the way of scholarships. In the past five years, the Spring Livestock Show has awarded $48,650 to eligible seniors from across the district.
We would like to invite you to this year's Spring Livestock Show and Fair, April 13th and April 14th, at the Nagy Pavilion on Hardy Road. The schedule is on the handout provided to you. When you get there, be sure to stop by the announcer's stand and say hi. We love to see our community members supporting, out-supporting our students.
Last year, we were able to pay out $110,394 to our students. This money came from live auction, silent auction, private sale, and add-ons. We would like to invite you all out to our auction this year on April 15th, beginning at 12:00 PM. Our hope every year is to sell every project, and through great community members like yourselves, we have been able to do that for the last few years, and hope to do it again this year. If you're unable to attend the auction, there are other ways to get involved, such as sponsorships and donating to the Spring Stampede Buyers Group, which was our top buyer last year, and we definitely appreciate the continued support. Information for each of these are in the handout as well. We look forward to seeing you all there again this year. Thank you.
Yes. If you guys are not out at the Spring Livestock Show, you are missing a treat. These young people have worked all year, starting in August through April, preparing their animals. We're talking about rabbits and chickens. I call them chickens. You guys call them what? Oh. And of course, there are pigs. And, you know, it's kind of sad after they have done this all year, they put them up for auction, and people like myself go and purchase them, and I have to see these kids crying because they're leaving their animals. And I understand that's why some of them don't show their animals. They often want to give them away because they know that unfortunately, they don't have. But I tell you, they do a great job. Trust me, the meat is delicious. So if you guys come out and support our students, I'm happy to help them every year through Texas Rural Commissions, well, it's the Texas State Rural Commissions Committee. We're able to donate to the Tri-Club every year, and we gave you a nice donation this past year. So congratulations and good luck to you.
All right.
Every year, Spring ISD has the opportunity to select an Elementary and Secondary Principal of the Year. Spring ISD has a comprehensive process, which includes reviewing performance data, including star, map, and attendance data for both growth and achievement purposes. We also have our assistant superintendents examine their principal's leadership using a rubric on areas such as the implementation of the springway systems and routines, culture, and their ability to lead and take coaching feedback, among others. Finally, the finalists are narrowed down, and they participate in a panel interview with the superintendent, the chief of schools, and the former Elementary and Secondary Principal of the Year. We ask a lot of the questions, and we finally get to the finalists. This year, we are excited to recognize Principal Myra Garcia from Cooper as our Spring ISD Elementary Principal of the Year. And Principal Rodney Lewis from Ploton as the Spring ISD Secondary Principal of the Garcia and Lewis will advance to the Region Four Principal of the Year competition, and will also be recognized at the district's annual employee recognition banquet to be held later this year.
We are always excited to recognize our Principals of the Year, and we want to wish
Any family members, stand, please.
A ver los papás, Ms. Garcia, parense también. A ver señora, yo sé que ya está, parece.
And now we move on to our March Above and Beyond the Call of Duty recipients. There are many factors that contribute to a student's academic and future success. While we, as educators, focus on their scholastic ability, it is important that we also address their social and emotional needs. Mentoring is a great source of support for students, and it is our honor to recognize an outstanding community partner who has served our students for many years. The Xi Ada Alamba Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, Inc., under the leadership of President Brian McLemore, has gone above and beyond the call of duty to serve our students. They have mentored students at Roberson Middle School for the past seven years. Prior to that, they mentored students at Westfield High School for many years, utilizing their signature utilizing their signature Go To High School, Go To College program. They have introduced and reinforced skills that prepare our students for success, both academically and in life. The Go To High School, Go To College program, established in 1922, concentrates on the importance of completing secondary and collegiate education as a road to advancement. Through this educational initiative, students receive pertinent information and learn strategies that facilitate success. Our students participate in college readiness workshops and college visits. They also participate in workshops that teach them valuable life skills, such as time management, conflict resolution, and how to build positive and healthy relationships. When students are struggling and need someone to talk to other than their teachers or parents, the men of Alpha Phi Alpha are there for them and stand in the gap. They serve as excellent role models and mentors, and we are grateful for that, for they have, for that they have chosen our students to pour into. Please help us welcome Mr. Brian McLemore, President of Alpha Phi Alpha and his fellow fraternity members.
To Dr. Heno Hosa, President Durant, and the board, Alpha Phi Alpha. Alpha Phi Alpha members, y'all come on up. And real Isaiah is stuck behind. Alpha Phi Alpha promotes leadership, brotherhood, and academic excellence while providing advocacy and service for our communities. In that mission statement, we do pull out from that our academic excellence and our service to communities with the Go To High School, Go To College program. And so, we are, we are excited, we are honored, we are privileged, and we are happy that we have the opportunity to partnership with Spring ISD for, I think someone said for approximately 20 years. And so, this program works with those youth from six to 17 years of age. And he already gave you the rundown of the overview of the program, so I won't restate that. But we want to say thank you for this recognition, and we, we are excited about continuing and working with Spring ISD. I do want to recognize the Chair, Brother Charles Brown, who has steers the committee of Go To High School, Go To College. Thank you. Thanks so much.
On behalf of Spring ISD, I'm Board of Trustees and our school leadership, we just want to thank you for all that you do, and consistency matters. We appreciate your support, and we know that Alpha Phi Alpha has been around since 1906, and has been doing great work in the community. And we truly appreciate the impact that you've had on our students here in our Spring Pageant. So thank you so much for all that you do, and we're looking forward to continuing our partnership.
I'd like to invite the principal, Ms. Brumziah, please. See everybody?
The gentleman right here in the center. Yeah. There you go. Okay, that's good. Mr. Adams. Just a little bit, there you go. All right. There we go. All right, guys, here we go. Nice smiles, everybody, on three, one, two, three. Hang on. One more, here we go. On three, one, two, three.
We now will move on to our Points of Pride, part of the recognition tonight. And tonight, we recognize Decane High School Athletic Trainer Kathy Voison, who was recently named a recipient of the Athletic Trainer Spotlight Award by the Texas State Athletic Trainers Association, TSATA. Let's give her a round of applause. This was in December. Voison was named by TSATA as a recipient of the Organization's Spotlight Athletic Trainer Award, representing TSATA Region 6 and the Greater Houston area. The Spotlight Athletic Trainer Award was established by TSATA to recognize dedicated young athletic trainers throughout the state of Texas who display noteworthy professional excellence, as well as a deep commitment to the health and safety of the student athletes they serve. Ms. Voison demonstrates these qualities every day in her service to Decane High School and the Spring ISD community. She brings a special passion to the position and is a skilled healthcare provider, serving as a positive role model to her students and an effective mentor to the school's athletic training student aides. She works diligently behind the scenes to positively impact those around her and is highly respected by staff and admired by Decane students. Last May, Ms. Voison was recognized by her peers as the inaugural recipient of the Decane High School Athletic Servants Heart Award. Ms. Voison is committed, passionate, and student oriented in her approach and acts as a great advocate on behalf of Decane High School Athletics and the student athletes of Spring ISD. Let's give her another round of applause. And moving on to our next Point of Pride. Tonight, we recognize Major Elementary School Counselor, Calencia Leno, who was recently named a recipient of the 2023 Walter Casey Educator Excellence Award by the Anti-Defamation League. Let's give her a round of applause. That was in the Southwest Region. Ms. Leno, who is one of only three recipients of the award this year across the entire ADL Southwest Region, was honored for her work. She was honored for her work as a No Place For Hate Coordinator at Major Elementary, and for her commitment to building and a learning and community of inclusivity, respect, and equity among her students and fellow educators. Believing that educators are crucial to promoting the understanding and appreciation of diversity, the Walter Casey Educator Excellence Award was created to celebrate the efforts of those who nurture mutual understanding and respect among diverse school populations and who challenge their students to question stereotypes and confront hate in all of its forms. The award is named in honor of Walter Casey, a Polish-born Holocaust survivor who took two, together with his father, spent World War II in five deferment concentration camps, including Auschwitz, before being liberated by Allied forces in May 1945. After his own survival and eventual relocation to the US, Walter grew up and went on to speak to youth educators and community leaders in the Houston area and elsewhere about the dangers of prejudice and bigotry and the importance of love, respect, and understanding. Ladies and gentlemen, Calencia Leno. All right. Okay, our next Point of Pride. The Best of the Bunch marks the highest level of achievement a district can attain in the TDA's Texas Department of Agriculture Annual Farm Fresh Challenge, part of Texas Agricultural Commissioner Sid Miller's Farm Fresh Initiative to connect Texas farmers and ranchers with school nutrition programs. Spring ISD's Child Nutrition Department was once again awarded Best of the Bunch status for the district's commitment to offering locally sourced Texas foods and providing educational opportunities to help students learn more about nutrition and Texas agriculture. Throughout the month of October, participating schools championed healthy foods and Texas agriculture by providing multiple Texas grown foods as part of their weekly menus, offering agricultural education opportunities and sharing about students' experience on social media. Spring ISD has been named Best of the Bunch for seven years in a row and was one of only 76 schools, districts, or charter schools to earn the honor this year in this year's contest. Let's give them a big round of applause. So I'd like to recognize the following individuals. Director of Child Nutrition, Shelley Copeland. Assistant Director of Child Nutrition, Kevin Trom. Coordinator of Nutrition and Menu Planning, Jennifer Fasano. Coordinator of Operations, Sandy Campbell. And lastly, Child Nutrition Chef and Production Supervisor, Ivan Morales. And our final award for this evening. Tonight, we recognize the Spring ISD Procurement Department, which was recognized by the Texas Association of School Business Officials, TASBO, with a 2023 Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations. The Award of Merit was established in 2009 to recognize Texas school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and education service centers that are committed to following professional standards in the acquisition of goods and services. Each year, volunteers with the TASBO Purchasing and Supply Management Research Committee evaluate the award criteria to ensure it represents the latest best practices. They then review new and recertification applications. For 2023, only 71 recipients statewide met the stringent criteria to qualify for the award. TASBO Executive Director Tracy Ginsburg recently said, "As Texas school districts face ever increasing pressure to use funds efficiently, we're proud of the work our honorees do to streamline operations, comply with regulations, and set the standard for how to utilize taxpayer dollars." These organizations have not only demonstrated their professional purchasing operations by documenting their district's policies and procedures, but have also shared these best practices with colleagues throughout the state of Texas. Spring ISD's procurement team was honored at an awards reception held during the 2023 TASBO Annual Conference in San Antonio in February. And tonight, we recognize them here. And so, I'd like to invite Ann Westbrook and Philip Ellison, Executive Director of Procurement Services, up for a photo.
Joining me, I'd also like to congratulate Gerald Mosley, our Director of Purchasing, and Nicole Barnett, our Director of Distribution Services.
Our next item is Agenda Participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before they are considered by the Board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered for Agenda Participation?
No, Madam President, not for Agenda Participation.
Thank you. Our next item is Public Participation. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up to speak for Public Participation?
Yes, Madam President, we have one speaker tonight. Ms. Kirsten, is it Uker? While Ms. Uker comes to the podium, she is going to speak on incentives and payroll issues. I do have a short blurb I need to read real quick before your time begins. So the Board invites interested citizens to address the Board on any subject that they desire other than allegations concerning the character or capability of any Board member, staff member, citizen, or student of the district. The Board provides an opportunity on the agenda for citizens to address the Board, and we welcome your participation. The Board will listen and will not interrupt unless the person addressing the Board infringes on the guidelines as stated previously or exceeds the time limit authorized for the presentation. In this case, you will have three minutes to present. Mr. Shepherd will keep time, which will be displayed on the various large monitors. According to law, the Board may not take any action on any item that is not on the agenda. The Board will not debate nor respond to any question during the meeting in order to research the question thoroughly before replying. The Board will seriously consider the matter brought to its attention and respond appropriately. Also, according to law, it is a criminal offense for a person to obstruct, prevent, interfere with, or disrupt a lawfully called meeting through physical action or verbal utterance. Citizens are requested to supplement any oral address to the Board with a written summary of their presentation and any recommendations they may wish to suggest. Thank you for your concern regarding our school district, and we will hear you now.
I'm Kirsten Uker. I'm a 7th grade ELA teacher at Twin Creeks Middle School. I'm also our Campus Teacher of the Year. As he said, I'm here to discuss the teacher effectiveness incentive and some payroll issues that have been occurring. I'm not here to complain, but instead here to shed light and hopefully spur
...received, so we weren't able to check and do our own checks and balances on that. Some of us were wondering in the meeting that we had today, why did it take five months for this issue to come to light? And I know that I'm wondering what can we do in the future to make sure that this doesn't happen again to our best teachers? The reason that's important, if our best teachers are getting frustrated, that's going to ultimately impact student outcomes. We want our best teachers to stay. I do want to make sure that, I know that we did discuss in the meeting that they are going to give us an itemized list. We were promised that we should have that on Thursday. That is one day, less than 24 hours, before this impacts our paychecks on the 24th. We would like to have had that earlier and have more transparency here with this issue. We want to be able to trust that the awards that we receive stay in our accounts. I do understand that mistakes happen, so yeah, there we go.
Thank you, Ms. Kristen.
We have no additional speakers tonight, Madam President.
For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Academics Craig Crayar.
Thank you, President Durant, and esteemed members of the Board, Superintendent Hinoza. Together, I bring you an item that I'm hoping that the Board will consider approving for grant funds awarded by the Houston Endowment of $450,000 to support our Grow Your Own work specifically for our District of Innovation teachers. Specifically, this grant will establish, will help support our teacher recruitment, induction, and retention. Will focus, has a profound focus on building a diverse teacher pipeline to mirror our students' population here in Spring ISD. We will also be focusing on providing a stipend to all of the participants towards all alternative certification program fees. This will be a fully funded, year-long induction program, which will also fund up to one to two coordinator positions to help assist with this Grow Your Own Pipeline initiative. So we hope to continue to increase the retention rate of our teachers with zero to five years of experience, increase the high-quality candidates that we have in our pool, and continue to develop all of our staff through this initiative. So with that being said, I'm open for any questions, but this is an exciting opportunity for Spring ISD.
Well, I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the grant funds provided by the Houston Endowment Organization.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the grant funds provided by the Houston Endowment Organization. Thank them.
You got your second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee McDaniel that the Board of Trustees approve the grant funds provided by the Houston Endowment Organization. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to thank you all who made this grant possible, because I know there's a lot of paperwork and that you're going to be doing reports and data collection and everything, but it adds money to our budget, and it's just a wonderful service. Thank you so much.
Not hearing any other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much, trustees.
Thank you, Chief Crayar. Next, I'd like to represent our Chief of Innovation, Matt Parisaw.
Thank you, President Durant, and good evening, members of the Board, and Dr. Hinoza. This item can be found on page 44 of your packets. It is a memorandum of understanding with the University of Texas and Spring ISD for us to engage in the OnRamps Program. The OnRamps Program is an innovative program that provides opportunities for dual credit for our students. So this specifically ties directly to our strategic plan and the priority for opportunities. As you know, we continue to work to add additional dual credit offerings. And so with that, we have our current partnership with Lone Star, where students are able to either go directly to Lone Star, take courses online, or through having them onsite on our campuses. We also offer dual credit through the opportunity where some of our teachers become certified through Lone Star, and then we have the AP exams. The benefit with dual credit is that students are able to guarantee that they get that college credit, where with the AP, it is up to that AP exam. So one of the benefits to this program, while it is a distance, it's online curriculum, however, it is taught in partnership with one of our local teachers and a teacher at the University of Texas. So students are able to complete two levels of work at the same time. So as they're going through the course, they can actually complete the high school level, you know, assignments, and then they do college-level assignments. And so unlike most other dual-credit programs where you only, you know, you can pass it, but you have to have all of it completed for, you know, the college level, in this, students could, you know, we're always shooting for the goal for dual credit, but there is also that opportunity for them to earn high school credit in case something happens along the way during the semester, instead of them losing out on credit altogether if the rigor level. Another benefit is that it's here in our schools and being taught by our instructors, and they also are not required to have those 18 hours and master's degrees, which is a normal certification process for dual credit with Lone Star. Our teachers are able to do that with their teaching certification, with that content area expertise, and then be able to partner with the University of Texas. It's also a very cost beneficial program. It's subsidized by TEA for only $149 per student, and students who aren't free or reduce lunch for $99. So those are fees that we cover for all of our students who take dual credit in the district. And then on top of that, there's no additional textbooks. All of the curriculum is within the platform, and so there's no struggle to, you know, reach out and buy these different textbooks that often change from university to university times. So what you'll see in your packet is there's an initial presentation. The actual MOU begins on page 78.
Did you say how many students will be able to participate?
So our first year, we're looking at starting actually with a CTE. So another benefit of the program is they offer CTE courses as well. And so at Westfield High School, we are currently offering an arts education, media education course through our Media Tech Program. And so that crosswalks directly to one of the courses that is being offered through OnRamps. And so we're starting with that pilot. We already have, the campus is very excited about it, and they're ready to onboard. And then we will look, and our principals are also interested. And so we'll be looking at, you know, working on adding those courses. There is a summer training component for our teachers, and so we'll want to make sure that it's going to work in our teacher schedules, and they're also excited to be part of this dual-credit opportunity. So it'll be something we can scale upward, but we plan initially to start with our CTE at Westfield High School.
Do we know how those students are selected?
So those students designate the Media Tech in their PGP's, their personal graduation plans, so they're in that CTE pathway, and it's one of the courses in the pathway that we offer. So they'll be taking, they can actually take that course in their freshman level, but for us, where it falls in our CTE pathway would be during their sophomore year.
Thank you.
Dr. Parisaw, I was excited to see the different courses that could be offered. I was just amazed at something like quantum computing at some time. Also, I am always very concerned that science courses, especially at the college level, have a lab component, and I saw in the MOU that we are going to provide lab materials for biology, chemistry, geology, and physics. Do we have any problems acquiring those materials, or we're good?
No, ma'am, yes. So it does align to the Texas standards, and so those courses, we already have the labs in place, we already have the materials in place, and that's actually very, the same for the CTE that we're offering at Westfield, is that with that course, our students are already taking it, but they're not able to get dual credit at the moment. Through this MOU, we'll then be able to offer them the same course by the same teachers, but students are able to get the dual credit. And so we'll be able to do the same thing for the other content areas.
Dr. Parisaw, I appreciate that you provided the per-student cost for this. That's information I think is really useful for us. But I thought President Durant asked how many kids would be impacted, and I didn't hear even like a ballpark number of how many students we're trying to reach here.
Yeah, so it would be based on the numbers, and I believe that course, is it 30 students? As Ms. Cynthia Williams is in our audience today.
Yes. It will be on that course, and it will be part of the student's and their course planning for next year. And it is here, it will be your head.
Okay.
Yeah. So once we engage in the MOU, then we'll have that in place, and we can scale up. So every year, University of Texas will ask us what courses that we would like to offer, and we'll be able to add to that. So while it's starting with that initial pilot of 30 students, that will continue to scale up as we add course offerings.
Okay. So I'll be curious at some point to see, like, how we project this is going to impact CCMR? Because we just finished talking about how that accountability measure is being adjusted. So any program like this that can add a plus to that column, I want more information about.
So I can add actually an additional tidbit. So this is one of the initiatives from TEA and from Texas, the OnRamps Program. And so with that, for traditional dual-credit classes, there's certain expectations, like for reading and math, and how many hours you have to have to get that CCMR indicator. For the OnRamps Program, completing a course and earning dual credit automatically guarantees the one point for college or career military readiness without an IBC requirement or any other expectation. You automatically get the point, and it can be earned as young as freshmen.
Thank you, Dr. Parisaw. I'll now entertain a motion from the Board of Trustees to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with the University of Texas, Austin, and Spring ISD.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the Memorandum of Understanding with the University of Texas at Austin and Spring ISD relating to the OnRamps Program.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Adams that the Board of Trustees approve the Memorandum of Understanding with the University of Texas at Austin and Spring ISD relating to the OnRamp Program. Is there any discussion?
So are we looking at $12,000? Just like a ballpark number for the first year?
Yeah, so looking at the enrollment, we would look at the status for our students. We do have a pretty high number of students who are un-economically disadvantaged at Westfield, and so it would probably be closer to the $99 per student. And then for the teacher, there is a cost of $850 for the first year, and that's they attend a week-long training during the summer. There's also training throughout the year, which I think is one of the, another huge benefit to this program. You know, our AP teachers go through that summer institute too, it's a week long, but that's kind of, it's that one week every two years, where this, they're actually getting it every year, and then there's ongoing supports throughout the year to help them with the curriculum, and they're working in partnership with those teachers at the University of Texas.
Any further discussion? I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Parisaw.
For my next item, I believe is on page 102. And this is another Memorandum of Understanding. This one is with Career Team LLC, also known as Next Gen through the Next Gen Program, tied to our Strategic Plan of Opportunities as well. College or career military readiness is essential, and it's part of our portrait of a graduate, and making sure that every student is able to follow their dreams. What this partnership will do is actually started in 2021, in October of 2021, in partnership with the Gulf Coast Workforce Commission. They had signed a contract with Next Gen. And what the partnership does is it brings them alongside our school district, they'll provide supports at some of, at our different college fairs, they'll also be providing resources to our students to help them find careers that are highly marketable in the Houston area. They provide an online curriculum where students will have access to it, and they can go in and they can actually get practice with soft and hard skills, things such as resume building, developing their e-portfolio, even social media tutorials, like what to post, what not to post, how to build your social media so that you can find a job. And they even have an online job simulation. So there's a lot of the benefits through the online offering, as well as the direct support they'll provide in the district. I think one of the things that really appealed to us was also their work for students who are at risk and who may have dropped out. So they worked to help get those students back in school with us, to help show them that here are some career opportunities. They'll be able to work in partnership with Momentum as well for our students who may need immediate career, and then helping to get them in a position, as well as get them trained to be able to graduate and finish up. And so this MOU, which starts on page 104 in your binders.
I'll entertain a motion from the Board of Trustees to approve the Affiliation Agreement Memorandum of Understanding with Career Team LLC, Next Gen, and Spring ISD.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the Affiliation Agreement Memorandum of Understanding with Career Team LLC, Next Gen, and Spring ISD.
Second motion. It's been moved by Trustee Jensen and seconded by Trustee Newhouse that the Board of Trustees approve the Affiliation Agreement Memorandum of Understanding with the Career Team LLC, Next Gen, and Spring ISD. Is there any discussion?
Do we have any, do we have any data on their track record, previous success?
We can make that request. I do not have that with me tonight. I know they had a number of meetings with our CTE department, and Cynthia is here again. Did you want to speak to past data, success that they have?
Good evening. No, we do not have any past data on that, but they have been, the Next Gen is a new part of the workforce development, and they are targeting at-risk students. They provide opportunities where students can get certifications. They also provide funds for them to get uniforms, tools, depending on what the job that they're going into. So they're providing all of that. I have put them in contact with Momentum to see if that will be something where they could work with them once the agreement is signed, if it is signed, and that right now there's no cost to us. They have a lot of opportunities for students financially and getting them certified and job placement. So this would be a really great opportunity to expand the opportunities that we have for our students.
Thank you. Well, I just think...
Well, I just, I just think.
I thought she said, thank you.
It looks like a great program. I just feel like any affiliations or partnerships that we enter into, we should also be examining their track record, their bona fides.
They are a part of Workforce Solutions, which is a part of the Gulf Coast Work Labor Board. So they're not new. This is just a new part, the Next Gen. That's why they call it the Next Gen, but they are a part of the Gulf Coast Workforce Solutions.
Okay. There's some things about this that make me a little bit nervous, right? So it's it's new. This is listed here as an LLC. And so like typically, when you enter any type into any type of relationship like this, like part of what I want to see is what have you been doing? Even if you are like branching off into a different sector, what have you been doing? Who are the people? Who are the the principals? Like that's stuff that I sort of expect to see before I enter into any sort of.
And they were a part of our Career Connection Event that we had for our seniors, and they brought different workforce information. So they have a lot of resources that they've been sharing with our students, and they just want to partner so that they can come into the schools and do workshops and provide more resources.
I definitely hear the concern, Mr. Adams. And so we, like we said, with the Houston area, they did start in October 2021, so still relatively new for this Next Gen component. However, they had been in other markets before. So it's a partnership where the Gulf Coast Workforce, they identified this need for education and supportive youth. And so they they signed with this partner to support that in the Houston area. And so we can request. Yeah. And we'll and we'll request that for you. I'm happy to do that to see how how effective has it been in other markets.
Okay, thank you.
And they are promoting the skilled work labor force. And so that's why you see the different careers, the welding, the auto tech, the HVAC, and those areas.
Right, so I'm not doubting any of that, Ms. Williams. But so we find ourselves in a situation where everything we do has to matter for kids in a positive way. And so as as much as we can, I'd like to walk into any types of affiliations or partnerships with our eyes wide open, and which means we we can't overlook like anything, really, is where I'm coming from, so.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I did have one question about the the term. So the term will be one year commencing February to February of next year unless terminated earlier. So it just seemed a little bit of an odd timeframe to start and stop.
Yes, and so it's when, you know, we initially get the MOUs and the and start the work of reviewing before we bring them to the board. And so that was the initial date. It would it would actually be adjusted based on the date of when the board approves it. So it'd be one year from that term.
Just one more question for clarification. Is this organization affiliated with Gulf Coast Community Services? Or Gulf Gulf Coast what?
Workforce.
Workforce Solutions, okay. Is that the formerly work source, the work source, is that that company? Okay.
Okay, I'd like to ask my colleagues, are we comfortable moving forward or do we want to table this until we get additional information, consensus of anyone's concern? All right. Then I'll entertain a motion. That was the discussion. All right, it's been a lot of discussion. I lost my track. All right, so all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. All right, and thank you.
I think we're still good to go. The the legal updates are for awareness. They're provided for convenience, and actually, they are very convenient in that it puts relevant legal statutes, case law, regulations, and citations right there with the the local policies that they affect and and are part of. And so it allows sort of one-stop shopping. But they are not approved by the board because they are provided for convenience. The board doesn't approve statutes or case law. It's just there for line of sight. The local policies do require two readings, and so tonight we have the first reading. Before we get into this, though, I do want to be completely transparent with the board. The Governance Committee has not had an opportunity to review these in a face-to-face meeting. The policies were provided to the Governance Committee to be able to review and ask any questions. Dr. Jensen and I did discuss doing that. But at any point this evening, for any or all of these policies, if either the Governance Committee or the board would prefer that we table one or more policies, please let us know. The administration is happy to do that and take those back. So I just wanted to put that out there because I know there's often a question of whether the Governance Committee's had a chance to review.
Chief Binkley, didn't you provide this to everybody at the last work session, which was about a week and a half ago?
Yes, so all of these updates were provided then, and and the Governance Committee did receive them, I think about a week and a half to 12 days prior to that even. But again, I just, I don't want, I don't want the board to feel pressured that this is the first time you're seeing it. If there is one that you, one or more you'd like us to pull back, please do let us know. So for the legal updates, their overview begins on page 107. Again, as a reminder, these don't require a motion, they don't require board action. Update 119 came out in a non-legislative year. So these legal updates are generally going to be based on state regulations that were implemented as a result of legislation or as housekeeping revisions to improve clarity, improve alignment with statutory language, or update citations. I don't want to dive real deep into these. You do have the explanation of all the different changes that were made in your packet. But I will point out FFH, you see in here FFH Legal, we will see that again probably in the next eight to 10 months as those Title IX regulations are currently being updated again. And so we will see that one come back through, and we'll be able to provide that line of sight when it does. So before I jump into locals, I want to make sure everybody had a chance to to see the legals or see if you have any questions on the legal policies.
Chief Binkley, this is a legal one that we have no choice over because we always, federal and state law supersede the local policy. But one, I know you said that when you get these printouts, it's really thick and that you are presenting the materials that we actually need to look at and edit. But I was interested in BDB, Board Internal Organization Internal Committees. Does that affect our Governance Committee, Equity Committee, our Community Outreach Committee, and Audit Committee? We have four committees now.
That whole big package that you referenced, we did include on Board Insider. I do remember going back and looking at this one. I will be honest, I cannot remember the specifics off the top of my head, but I saw that too, and I I thought, is this going to negatively impact our board's committees? I remember looking at it and saying, no, it will not negatively impact our board's committees. But I don't want to speculate based on my my bad memory of actually what it was, but I will definitely get that answer for the board and provide the the relevant information as to what was updated and and what impacts, if any, it would have.
I went to a governance conference where I went to a legal seminar, and there was a question, when do you need a local policy? And it was pretty obvious. It was like when the legal policy says you need a local policy, things like that. But in delegation of authority, we've done that. So I just, it looked like we really have this pretty well covered in our district. So thank you.
So if there are no other questions on the legal and to keep us moving, I'll move into the local policies. Let me get this extra packet out of the way so I don't confuse myself. We do have, I think at the board's request last time, a separate motion for each of these. So just keep that in mind. I'm going to stop at the end of each local so that the board has an opportunity to make a motion if it so chooses. Also, remember, as you are reviewing these, blue bold is language that has been added, red strikeout is language that's being deleted, and green means the language was moved in its complete form from one part of the policy to a different part of the policy. The the majority of these revisions are really to align or comply with the changes to the state laws and agency regulations that created the updates to the legal policies. Oh, the other thing I wanted to point out, any local changes that we make aside from TASB, these revisions are highlighted in gray. You will not see any of those in here for these. We didn't have a need to make local changes here. So we're going to start with CPC Local on page 117. CPC Local is for records management, and it was revised to align with the recent updates to the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. We call that TSLAC. Electronics, electronic record standards, and it delegates to the Records Management Officer the responsibility to develop procedures for management of electronic records. So basically, TLAC is is coming to the 21st century and and creating new standards for electronic records management. Our Records Management Officer is delegated to the Executive Director of Procurement per board local policy, who is Philip Ellison, who received an award with the Procurement Team earlier this evening. Are there any questions on CPC Local?
So for clarification, are we making a motion after each reading? Is that?
After each policy, currently, the way we have it done is is to have a a motion for each policy. And so if there are no questions, I would defer to Madam President as to.
Thank you, Mr. Binkley. I will now entertain a motion that the board approve the first reading of CPC Local Office Management/Records Management.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of Board Policy CPC Local Office Management/Records Management.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of Board Policy CPC Local Office Management/Record Management. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. You can proceed.
Okay, so up next on page 120, we have DMA Local regarding professional development. This policy was revised to align with the requirements of SB 1267 from the 87th Legislative Session that the board review annually the professional development clearinghouse published by ESPEC and that the board approve annually the district's professional development plan. And again, this is another one of those revisions that's straight out of the requirements from statute.
There seems to be a typo on page 122, number three. Include to schedule the required professional development, maybe? Right now, it says D Bell.
Thank you for that. So I will say the, you may have seen in the packet sometimes, the the red, green, blue that we get directly from TASB will often throw throw things into the columns and others so that we do manually recreate these. So we will go back and we will be sure we fix that and get it updated.
So what we're doing is just becoming in compliance.
What do we know about this clearinghouse? I've never heard of it. Anybody?
Well, I used to get grants from ESPEC, so.
I know what ESPEC is.
Yeah. They seem to try to put together a clearinghouse of professional development programs that they have approved and they fund. So I assume this is a extension of that.
So, I mean, this is telling us that in providing professional development to our people, we must be guided by this clearinghouse that I've never heard of. Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable. Uncomfortable with this without more information about what the clearinghouse is.
And you'll see that the majority of this is blue, where there is all the new pieces to it and adding the whole piece on ESPEC Clearinghouse that is all the new. And you'll see what's been stricken, which is the red, which is what we normally focus on, is the district developing our professional development plan, which, you know, for us has been the passport, and then the requirement of the 50 hours of professional learning. I think we were just talking about that the other night. And so you'll see that that's all stricken and now bringing into place the ESPEC. And that's something that from our Chief of Academics and Workforce Development that we need to, this is brand new for us, right? For any of the districts that we'll have to work on.
Okay. On the TEA website, it says the continuing education and training clearinghouse purpose, the clearinghouse includes best practices and industry recommendations for the frequency of training of educators and other school personnel.
Yes, and you'll see that this is a new requirement that they're asking us to do. So we'll definitely have to explore what they are, the training and professional development that they are recommending, and then how does it align? And then to be able to put it together to bring it to the board for our plan.
Right, Superintendent. And in recent years past, the training and development was really mainly guided and driven by local decisions and specifically, you know, really crafting and creating a myriad of professional development that we felt was really needed for our schools and our educators and leaders. This is a little more specific and a little more directive in terms of ensuring that we are that we're capturing the PD that the state is wanting us to capture within our own district PD. Also, one thing I also want to note, too, that Spring has done well historically is we've always gone above and beyond the required amount of hours that TEA/ESPEC has required, which is 40. We've always done 50-plus for our educators, but that, to the Superintendent's point, that's also something now that we're also currently reviewing to ensure, to what Dr. Jensen, I think, just said around compliance, to make sure that we are within the requirements that this new policy is stating.
And I'm not, I'm not comfortable with, I don't think, I don't have enough information to make a decision.
Okay, could we all look at number one? It says be guided by the ESPEC Clearinghouse Training Recommendations. Two, note any differences in the district's plan. So it's not saying we have to use one of their recommended training programs, but that we. that we review it. And then note any differences in ours. See, I have no problem with that at all.
The sentence before number one says, "The district's professional development plan must be guided by..."
Must be guided by, and it's just...
I just would like to know more about what the ESPEC clearinghouse is.
And does that fit our needs? Does it fit our local needs, right?
All right. I've seen some very questionable professional development offered up to this board in past years. I'm not going to get specific at this point. I'm on a movie, you know, they videotape us. Where I don't think that choices were being made on the basis of what you asked about earlier, the track record on the CTE organization that we're going to be next gen, was it that you wanted to know their track records, you wanted to know their efficacy? And that's what ESPEC is aiming to do. That you are looking at that. And I will tell you that in the past, we had professional development presented to the Board of Trustees, and it's far in the past, but it was very questionable when I looked at it, and there was no track record. It was a very charming person who was selling a lot of people on this thing.
Just to add, it also says, "The board shall annually review the professional development clearinghouse published by ESPEC." So first, we review it, then we approve our district's plan. So as Dr. Jensen's saying, I don't think it's saying we have to have exactly what is in, what the clearinghouse provides is whether we want to align with it or not. And this is, this is...
So if it, if we, if it doesn't matter or we don't have to, why are we even doing it?
Because they want to have parameters. They want to provide recommendations from the state.
I can read a blurb here that's from TEA that talks about this. It said, "SB 1267 requires that the Board of Trustees of a school district and the governing body of an open enrollment charter school to the extent applicable review the clearinghouse and adopt a professional development policy that must be guided by the recommendations for training in the clearinghouse. Note any differences in the policy adopted by the district or school from the recommendations in the clearinghouse and include a schedule of all training required for educators. In addition to the training requirements, the clearinghouse also includes additional information to assist school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and educators. Some of the additional components include links to the trainings, professional development best practices, resources regarding the specific trainings, and continuing professional education requirements for certificate renewal. There are no reporting requirements by school districts or open enrollment charter schools of the adopted professional development policy or the noting of any differences from the recommendations in the clearinghouse. All documentations are to remain at the local level."
And I've sent you all that link in an email so you can look at it later. So what information are, would we like to get from the school leadership, the district leadership, in order for us to make a decision? I'm assuming we're going to table this discussion later? You said what?
I'd be in favor of that.
Okay. And so with that being said, Jeremy, what, I mean, I'm sorry, Trustee Adams, what information would you like for Jeremy to provide for us to be able to put it back on the agenda to make a decision next month?
Or would the Governance Committee like to have a deeper conversation?
Yeah. I mean, and our normal protocol is...
Yes, you go through Governance.
Right. And we haven't, for a variety of good reasons, we have not been able to meet and have the deeper dive into this that I would like to have.
So, and I think this goes back again to us talking about, you know, policy and processes. If it hasn't gone to Governance, why is it on this agenda?
And so that was part of the, I'll let Dr. Jensen, sorry. I was going to say, that was part of actually our discussion that we had had, that I would rather bring it and the board say, "We understand it hasn't gone to Governance, we want it to go back," or "We understand it hasn't gone to Governance, we want to take it forward." But that really is a decision of the board and the Governance Committee, that is not a Jeremy decision to make, right? And so we, local policy is the board's. We certainly serve at the board's pleasure, and so...
So what is...
And also, this is the first reading, so this is...
This is an urgent.
Right. This is the...
And, I mean, if you want more documentation or you want to look into it, let's do it. No?
Yeah. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we can table this and move on to the next one. I just want more information.
Madam President, you have a motion on the floor. Move that we table, table the discussion, table the motion. It was seconded, so it's table. It's not a fail.
Do you want me to make the motion? Madam President, I move that we table discussion of local policy DMA Local and for deeper consideration.
I second.
Your mic.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Hodges to table the discussion of the first reading for policy DMA Local and send it back through our Governance Committee for additional review. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously to table DMA Local. Mr. Binkley, you want to go on to our next item?
Yes, ma'am. We have EHAA Local, which is regarding required instruction, and this one is going to look a little familiar to you. This, the revisions here add language regarding new requirements for the adoption of instructional materials relating to child abuse, et cetera. In fact, this mirrors essentially the resolution that the board passed in, it was either January or February, for the, to convene the Shack to do the work on the curriculum, that then the Shack actually presented to the board at the work session a couple of weeks ago, and is on the consent agenda for the board to approve tonight. So this, this is the revisions to actually pull those pieces into policy where the statute is requiring them to be. Oh, and it's on page 123, I forgot that part.
So I'll entertain a motion for the Board of Trustees to approve the first reading for EHAA Local Basic Instructional Program Required Instruction.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of board policy EHAA Local Basic Instructional Programs Required Instruction, all levels.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of the board policy EHAA Local Basic Instructional Program. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Continue, Mr. Binkley.
Okay. Our next policy is on page 127, it is EHB Local. This is a new policy developed by TASB to comply with the TEA requirements regarding TEA cyclical monitoring reviews, and it requires regular training opportunities for teachers of students with dyslexia, which include new research and practices for educating such students.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for the board to approve the first reading of policy EHB Local Curriculum Design.
Madam President? Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of board policy EHB Local Curriculum Design Special Programs.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Adams that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of board policy EHB Local Curriculum Design Special Programs. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to mention that I said that when I went to that one session where it said, "When do you need a local policy? When a legal policy says you need a local policy." This is it.
Thank you, Trustee.
If I don't hear any further discussion, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Mr. Binkley, you want to continue?
Next, we have EHBAA Local regarding special education identification. This was also developed to comply with TEA requirements regarding the TEA cyclical monitoring reviews, and it requires the district to ensure that a child transitioning from early childhood intervention has an IEP developed and implemented by the child's third birthday. It is also a new policy, and it's on page 129.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of board policy EHBAA Local Special Education Identification Evaluation and Eligibility.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Adams that the board approve the first reading of policy EHBAA Local Special Education Identification Evaluation and Eligibility. So this is a brand new policy? From early childhood intervention to early childhood special ed services. We do this already, right?
Another one of those, as needed.
Okay. All those in, in further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously.
Next, we have EHBV Local Regarding Gifted and Talented Students on page 131 of your packet. This was revised based on HB 1525 from the 87th Legislative Session. This actually removes a requirement, that bill removed the requirement for districts to certify annually to the Commissioner of Education that the district's GT program is consistent with the Texas State Plan for the education of gifted and talented students. And so the revisions here remove that requirement out of our local policy since it's no longer a state law requirement.
So there is no longer Taggart? The Texas Association of Gifted and Talented?
Uh, I, I don't know about that. We just don't have to certify to the Commissioner that our GT program is consistent with the Texas State Plan for the education of gifted and talented students.
Let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor before that discussion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of board policy EHBV Local Special Programs Gifted and Talented Students.
Second the motion.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Hodges that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of policy EHBV Local Special Programs Gifted and Talented Students.
Trustee Newhouse second.
Trustee Newhouse, thank you. You have any more questions, Dr. Jensen?
I was just asking a question because this is another place where professional development training had to be okayed by Taggart for teachers to actually get their GT certification. Does anyone know the answer to this? Are GT teachers no longer having to be certified?
So, yes, so Taggart is the Association for Gifted and Talented and the required 30 hours that, and then the renewal of the six hours. What I believe in, you know, I'll defer, what this policy is relieving us is reporting to TEA the, what our program is, doesn't take away the requirement of the 30 hours of professional training, nurturing nature deeds, I can't remember all of them. Yes, all that is still, it's just removing the responsibility of the reporting to the Texas Education Agency.
That is my understanding as well.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously.
Next, we have EIF Local on page 135 regarding graduation. The revisions here are to comply with updated administrative code requirements that the district have a policy identifying the methods by which a student can confirm completion of a financial aid application. And so it's my understanding now that as part of graduation requirement, students, all students have to complete a financial aid application. And so this just outlines the different methods that students can utilize to prove to their, I'm assuming counselor, that they have done that application.
Requiring all students to do a pass? So they have to do it in order to graduate?
Yeah, it's a... It's a graduation requirement, and we as the district get evaluated on the percentage of students that completed or do not complete it. So yes, it's the requirement that our counselors go over with them, and we usually bring them into the labs and try to do it together. We have a lot of parent evening, financial, financial nights to help them complete it. Because as you know, it's a pretty lengthy process.
Is that the pass?
Mr. Binkley, I see another typo.
The good...
Do you have a significant, this is an insignificant, on page 137, under number two, United States, there should be space between United and States.
There should be a space.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of board policy EIF Local Academic Achievement Graduation.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee McDaniel that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of board policy EIF Local Academic Achievement Graduation. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Binkley?
Okay, so next, we have FFBA Local Regarding Trauma-Informed Care on page 138. And so this is also SB 1267 from the 87th Legislature, Legislature, which requires that training in trauma-informed care be provided in accordance with the professional development policy that we discussed earlier. SB 1267 also removed the requirement to annually report to TEA the number of employees who have participated in trauma-informed care training. So we have to make sure we provide the training, but we no longer have to report to TEA how many people have completed the training.
So how are we held accountable?
So, we are do, holding ourselves accountable, and I'm not sure if I have Dr. Collins here, but it is something that initially, when the state was requiring it, we made it part of the required training and their passport, and so we were tracking that. Not to say that the state, that the district will no longer track it, because it is something that's so important, especially with, you know, the state of the community, that we continue to do this. We're just not having to report it any longer. But we believe, you know, in Spring ISD, that this training is important, and we will continue to offer it.
Can I get a motion? Madam President?
Yes, I believe the district should continue to make this a requirement. So I move that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of board policy FFBA Local Crisis Intervention Trauma-Informed Care.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee Hodges that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of FFBA Local Crisis Intervention Trauma-Informed Care. Any more discussion? Trustee Adams?
This is, seems incoherent to me. That in a time when we're having the safety and security issues that we have, and all the trauma occurring across this country, the state would somehow think it's a good idea to remove, to stop paying attention to it, is essentially what we're doing. It doesn't make any sense to me. So I'm just, I'm generally con... So I'm just, I'm generally confused by this.
That's exactly why I said I think as a district, we should still require it as part of the passport.
Well, it concerns me that the people that help fund this don't, no longer think it's worth them, like, paying any attention to what school districts are doing. Like, it just, it's bad policy. It doesn't make sense.
I think it's still asking us that it's a requirement that we track it. Like, it is putting the responsibility on us. The only thing it's removing, very similar to the GT, is that we don't, we no longer have to report it to the state. But it is still saying that we have to require it, that it must be included in our professional development plan. For us, it was our passport, and that was the requirement. So we still have to do this. And when you approve our professional development plan, I know you're going to be looking to say, hey, Dr. H, you forgot to include that, right? And when we track those hours, those are pieces that, you know, it's going to be, it's going to continue to be a requirement that our teachers attend that session. So it's just giving us the authority back to
Hold ourselves accountable.
To hold ourselves accountable. There you go.
We all like, don't we all like local control?
Check your mic. Your mic.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Binkley, let's keep going.
Okay, I have our last one. FFH local regarding student freedom from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation on page 140. This one, I'm just going to tell you, there's a little bit of illogicalness here. So the first part makes complete sense. Language was revised to meet updated requirements regarding immediate notice to parents of dating violence, both to the parent of the alleged victim and to the parent of the alleged respondent. And so that makes sense. Revisions also moved the statement of nondiscrimination down below the prohibited conduct. So there are two different definitions of sexual harassment. Language in the policy is revised to distinguish between the process for Title IX sexual harassment and the process for all other sexual harassment. Because the definitions of those at the case law level and the federal statute level do have some significant differences. And so this is allowing policy to catch up with the different definitions and to make sure that we have the correct processes in place depending on those definitions. And if anybody's curious, the differences come down to things like ands and ors, whether conduct is severe and pervasive or if it's severe or pervasive, as well as some other subtleties.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of board policy FFH local, student welfare, freedom from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation.
Second.
Removed by trustee Hodges and seconded by trustee Adams that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading of board policy FFH local, student welfare, freedom, and discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. Is there any discussion?
Can you help me understand? There's a sentence here where it talks about other sexual harassment. And it says, "Sexual harassment of a student by a district employee includes both welcome and unwelcome sexual advances." How could any of it be welcome if we're considering it harassment in the first place?
So trying to think of how to have this discussion on the record in open session and to be very politically correct and appropriate for any of our audience members. But the first scenario that would come to mind would be potentially a young teacher and an older high school student. And what this is saying is even if the conduct, even if the student welcomes the conduct, it is still sexual harassment. There is no safe zone for any of our employees or educators to have any kind of sexual relationship with a student.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. That was the last.
That was, thank you so much, Board. And please, I just want to reiterate that administration did not bring these in a vacuum. We certainly did have discussions with governance. I know this was a little bit out of process. And so we'll continue to have those discussions with governance.
And we did have it on the agenda for the work session. We just tabled it due to the lateness of that evening. So with that, I'm going to move on to our next item. And I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrook.
Good evening, President Durant, Dr. Hannah Hossen, members of the board. The first item under Financial Services begins on page 152 of your binders, and it is the monthly report of taxpayer refunds.
Has our HCAD litigation list shrunk just because of the timing, time of year?
It's absolutely timing. We just finished our busiest part of the tax season. And so as we get through that part of the year, you tend to see a little bit more come up. It's definitely timing. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Then I'll now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees ratify the taxpayer refunds exceeding $500.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees ratify the taxpayer refunds exceeding $500.
I seconded.
It's been moved by trustee Hodges and seconded by trustee Newhouse that the Board of Trustees those, Dr. Jensen. It's been moved by trustee Hodges and seconded by Dr. Jensen that the Board of Trustees ratify the taxpayer refunds exceeding $500. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Westbrook, you can continue.
Thank you. The next item begins on page 156. And I wanted to make a note, this is a report of cooperative purchases exceeding $50,000. No board action is necessary on this item. It's a for-your-information-only item. And the list is actually on page 156.
Ms. Westbrook, I have a question. What is the expense on the P2304831, the $76,740? What is that? I'm referring to, it says sales to non-taxable customer. What's that?
Ann, turn on your mic.
It is a technology product. It's called DecisionEd. It's our data warehouse that's used for reports that are provided in various different ways. Our enrollment reports that are, come out weekly, the special population reports, GT, special ed, those types. It's a data warehouse system.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You may continue, Ms. Westbrook.
Okay, the next item is on page 158. And this is the independent auditor's engagement letter for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. And so it is year three of a five-year request for qualifications that was conducted in March of 2020. So it's the kickoff of the external audit for this fiscal year that we're currently in that ends June 30.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve engagement with Whitney Penn for the district's annual audit.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Newhouse and seconded by trustee McDaniel that the Board of Trustees approve the Whitney Penn, approve the engagement with Whitney Penn for the district's annual audit. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to make a comment that I've made frequently. When you go to sessions on providing, preventing fraud, that you should not have the same person doing your audit all the time. But Whitney Penn is using different people. So we're good.
Yeah, I agree with that. I have a question about how much or if the cost for this service is increasing. Seems like everything costs more. And I'm just kind of curious as to whether this does, and if so, how much more.
So the cost this year for this year's audit is $88,000, and that's on page 163. That's up, I believe, about $5,000 over the current year. And typically, so of course, their costs are increasing, as are everyone else's. But also, their costs tend to go up with changes in pronouncements, which means that they're going to spend more hours on our audit. So there have been a couple of significant GASB governmental accounting standards board changes that have come out over the last couple of years that have impacted the cost of the audit. The next one that we have coming up is subscription-based instructional technology where we're having to track all of our agreements that we have with subscriptions, with software companies, and that sort of thing. And so that's pretty labor-intensive. And when those changes happen, we tend to see an increase in our cost. And in addition to that, we're still within ESAR. And so ESAR causes more audit work that needs to be done. So it has increased, but not significantly so.
No, that's not, I mean, it's like 4% or so?
Very low.
So something that I'll start doing is asking that question about everything so that we have sort of a feel for the percentage things are increasing and whether there are any sectors that are outliers on that.
Good question. All right, so that kind of puts you on notice that that question will get asked. All right, any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Westbrook?
Yes, ma'am. The next item is on page 171. And it's a request for proposal for furniture and installation services. And so this comes timely as we are kicking off all of the projects with the 2022 bond. And right now, we have one significant project that's still underway, and we'll have a couple of RFPs associated with that in just a moment. And that's the Momentum and Clark Elementary School project that we currently have going on. So with this one, with the furniture and installation, we had a total of 17 vendors respond. You'll see, it looks a little different than what you're used to seeing. There's lots of items that we need. And if you see an X by that company, that means the company is able to provide that particular item, that particular furniture item. And so we are recommending award to the top five vendors that are able to provide either all or the vast majority of the items that the district is in need of.
This Wexer Equipment Company doesn't seem to have very much.
Yes, but they offer some of the more significant items, the desk. The, primarily the desk. So they can offer some of the bigger items.
I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees award the contract of furniture and installation services to the providers recommended by the administration.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Newhouse and seconded by trustee Adams that the Board of Trustees award the contract for furniture and installation services to the providers recommended by administration. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. There was, of course, I know we've brought it up once already where myself and trustee Adams, trustee McDaniel, and trustee Newhouse took the finance education class. And anyway, one of the topics that they talked about was a contract checklist. And that checklist would help give us, like, return on investment. We can actually provide an example of that. I think that's something that I think we need to look at to start helping us with our costs and making sure that we're getting all bang for our dollar as much as possible.
I think that's a good recommendation. I don't know if Ms. Westbrook's, have you ever seen anything similar to that? I know you got an example.
An example would be great. We do have an internal checklist of all of the contracts that we have. And that's how we keep track of what's coming up for renewal, that sort of thing. But absolutely would love to see it.
Yeah, we can provide that for you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Westbrook?
The next item begins on page 178. And this is a request for proposal for third-party code review and Texas accessibility standard services. And so what we're looking for with this RFP is a vendor that can address all of the requirements under the Texas Education Agency with specific areas of emergency egress, structural integrity, life safety, energy conservation, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. And so they would come out and review to make sure that everything is up to code. And so with this particular RFP, we had two responses, of which one was actually disqualified because they were not able to provide the services that were listed in the RFP. So we are recommending the remaining vendor, who was deemed to be qualified and actually received a pretty decent score based on the response to the RFP. And again, this is specifically related to the Clark Elementary and Momentum High School project.
I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees award the contract for third-party code review and Texas accessibility standard services to the provider recommended by the administration.
Second. It's been moved by trustee McDaniel and seconded by trustee Hodges that the Board of Trustees award the contract for third-party code review and Texas accessibility standard services to the provider recommended by administration. Do we have any discussion? All right, call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Westbrook?
The next item is on page 18, begins on page 181. And it's a request for qualifications, again, related to that federally funded construction project, the Clark and Momentum project. And this one is for professional services, specifically geotechnical investigation, construction material testing, HVAC testing and balancing, and those associated professional services, again, related to that Momentum project. And so we had 11 vendors respond. And there are three, the top three vendors that are listed as the recommended vendors that could provide those professional services as needed.
I will entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the firms selected to be assigned potential contracts for required professional services related to the Momentum project.
Second. Moved by trustee Adams and
Moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees approve the firms selected to be assigned potential contracts for the required professional service related to the Momentum project. Do we have any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. You can continue.
The next request for qualifications begins on page one eighty-five and this is for investment advisory services. And so when we have the bond funds that are in the district's possession, we create a cash flow analysis that says when we'll need to draw the funds based on the projects and based on the purchase of items. And so when there's funds that are not necessarily needed at that moment, then the district is able to invest those funds. So of course, we keep with our Public Funds Investment Act and anyone that we do business with has to adhere to that. They have to sign off and adhere to those public funds investments. And so what the investment advisory services company does is they help us find those safe within Public Funds Investment Act securities that we can invest in and earn interest income on while those funds are not necessarily needed. So that's what this request for proposal does is it identifies a vendor that is qualified to provide those services. And so we had five vendors respond. One was disqualified. Again, their level of expertise and services did not adhere to or align to the district's scope of services of what we needed. The others were quite qualified, but the top vendor stood out quite a bit. And so we're making a recommendation for Hilltop Securities, which is also the company that worked with the district with the 2016 bond proceeds.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees award a contract for investment advisory, investment advisory services to the provider recommended by the administration.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Jensen that the Board of Trustees award a contract for investment advisory services to the provider recommended by administration. Do we have any discussion?
Trustee Newhouse, you have me? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Ms. Westbrook, please continue.
The last item for financial services this evening begins on page one eighty-eight and this is an item that I'm not sure you've seen in quite some time because it was coupled with our property insurance over the last several years. And so we had done an RFQ for property insurance and then also our liability and automobile insurance. They were together on one RFQ. But if you recall, several years ago, the property insurance increased significantly and we went out for RFQ. Well, we only went out for an RFQ for the property insurance portion, not the automobile and liability portion. So you're seeing this item because now it's standing alone and because of the amount of the item. It is covered under an interlocal agreement that we have with TASB, Texas Association of School, School Boards. But this is the insurance policy for our general employee liability and also our automobile insurance. And so what you'll see here is over the next several pages, beginning on page one ninety-one, is this is our automobile coverage. And so you can, you can see a summary of all of the insurance that is covered under this policy with TASB. Again, we've been with TASB for several years. It's just because the two, two pieces of insurance are broken apart now that we need to bring it forward as a separate item. You can see the automobile liability insurance, the limit, the deductible, and then the premium that the district has to pay. And then the liability insurance, privacy and information security insurance, which is something that's becoming extremely critical for school districts. And to be quite honest with you, insurance companies are learning to adjust to this new environment. We have to fill out cybersecurity questionnaires and talk about all the things that the district is doing to safeguard the district's systems. But it is a line item that is a little bit more than what we've seen before, even though it's only forty-six thousand. We anticipate as they learn more about the exposure, we could see that item go up even more in the future. Overall, the total cost is six hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. And to put that into context for you, if you turn to page one ninety-eight, you can see the comparison between the current year's policy and the renewal. And so overall, the increase in the premium for the next year, which will begin on April first, is sixteen thousand dollars, which is an increase of two point seven one percent. This policy is actually not increasing very much, but our property insurance is increasing significantly. All of the events that have taken place over the last couple of years, even though we're still a district that tends to be low risk, our, our costs have gone up about twenty-five percent and we'll talk about that a lot more in April, but I just wanted to mention it.
When do we ever catch a break for being low risk? Because I, I feel like I complained about this a few years ago. And then it's like when, when we do get the catastrophic events, our damage is minimal. So it would seem to me like the actuaries would at some point give us some kind of a break.
Wholeheartedly agree with you on that one. And I wanted to make sure that when you saw the amount on this one, I'm like, this is small compared to what you'll see when we start talking about the costs coming up next year. This year, or excuse me, coming up in this year's budget, this year, the increases were for the property insurance were between twenty-five percent and thirty-five percent. So we're on the lower end of that twenty-five to thirty-five percent. That's not saying much, but it's, you know, it's better than thirty-five percent.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the liability and automobile insurance policy, which would begin on April first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
It was moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee McDaniel that the Board of Trustees approve the liability and automobile insurance policy, which will begin on April first, two thousand twenty-three. Any additional discussion?
One quick question about the weather perils. I noticed it said they updated the language to include convective storms and freezing temperatures. So I guess they've included the freeze-Mageddon situation in there. Did that have any impact to cost? Because I don't see that as a line item anywhere.
Which page are you on? Because this policy doesn't actually cover the weather and peril events. That's what we would have on the property insurance. I believe TASB just does an all-inclusive, but the policy that TASB underwrites for spring ISD doesn't include that. That's on our property.
Okay, that's the page one ninety.
I think this is just TASB's general, not necessarily related to spring.
Okay. Was that a little confusing? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Our next item is our committee report. Our next item is the Board Audit Committee update. At this time, I'll give a, a brief update that starting this week, our internal auditor, Patricia Rios, will start next school year's risk assessment. So Board members and administration will receive a survey. That's the monkey survey that comes out to provide your input for next year's internal audit projects. And so if everyone can please be sure to complete that survey. What's yours? Survey monkey, what did I say? That's what I read, okay. Thank you, Trustee Hodges. Our next committee is the Board Governance Committee and so I'll turn it over to our Governance Lead, Dr. Devergensen, to provide an update.
It's been a very, very, very busy month and we have been to Austin and talked to legislators. We have been to conferences and taken governance training. And on top of that, we have had quite a bit of training as a board where we selected our high priority legislative advocacy items, which we knew were going to change and we're right in the midst right now as, Mr. Trustee Adams, if you'll reiterate, that tomorrow is a very crucial time that the Senate is going to be considering vouchers and that if you can contact the people on that committee and express your opinion, it would really, really make a difference when these people see how the electorate in Texas feel. So we'll be resuming our regular meetings next month. And at this point, we really didn't have very significant updates that we had much to really edit and change. So I thank Mr. Binkley again for taking the lead on that one. So that's it for the Governance Committee.
I'd just like to comment on how proud I am of the governance and advocacy efforts that I've seen from my colleagues. Even especially want to call out Trustee McDaniel's who serves as, as our delegate. I have seen, I don't know if you all watched our Twitters, but I have seen my colleagues in Washington, in the Capitol, meeting with legislators advocating for our students. I've seen them get in a van with the administration at five or six in the morning and drive to Austin and do all that walking on the hill to advocate for our students. And I, I believe public education right now is under attack and if we don't speak out and advocate for our students, we will. And I just want to thank my colleagues and this board for how engaged you've been this legislative session, how we've set priorities and we haven't just talked about it, we've walked the walk. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you for mentioning Washington DC. I'd like, also like to mention that Carmen Correa joined us in that advocacy. So that's nice.
All right. Our next item is our Board Equity Committee update and at this time, I'll turn it over to our committee lead, Trustee Winford Adams, to provide an update.
Thank you, Madam President. So we were able to squeeze in a meeting, but as Tracy Jensen said, it's been hard to get together on our assigned Mondays, but we got in a meeting on March sixth and we addressed sort of two issues that I want to talk about. We have a, a schedule that we're keeping in the Equity Committee and so we, we made an effort to get back to that schedule and we discussed from our Equity Report, Domain Two, which is Leadership, Management and Accountability, specifically as it relates to our staff's survey results and professional development. And so to that end, we received some updates and reports on professional development from Dr. Mendoza, Dr. Harris, there was somebody else missing. Was it just, okay, about our professional development efforts and our plan for making sure that we are providing our teachers what they need to service our children here in spring. And so we'll be, we spent some time talking about that. The other issue we addressed, we tabled an action item, I think a few months ago around a, an incentive bonus for administrators, for bilingual administrators, so that we could take a deeper dive in the Equity Committee. And we took that deeper dive and discussed amongst the Equity Committee, like the, the real need for bilingual administrators in spring, especially as our demographics are developing. And so I, I think as a committee, we all came to a consensus that we should move forward with a resolution to go ahead with that initiative. And there is a cost associated with it, which we discussed at the other meeting.
And I do have copies of that resolution if the Board would like me to pass them out.
So that is on our agenda for this evening? So we, we can move forward with that resolution this evening if the Board so desires.
I'd like to hear. I guess we need the motion. Are there any questions? I, um, well, I don't know what you all discussed, that they're bringing it back. So can I get some more? Can you elaborate for me a little more?
I'm gonna defer to Dr. Hinojosa, who really lays out the case for why we need the, to incentivize more of our people going into the pipeline as bilingual administrators.
And I, I heard Mr. Binkley talk about that he does have a copy of the resolution that the Board reviewed a month ago. So if we can go ahead and, and give it to the, to the Board so they have it before them. And our Equity Committee spent quite a bit of time just digging deeper into this and really looking at the needs of our community. And when we're talking about bilingual individuals that are needed in spring ISD, we're specifically looking for administrators that are fluent Spanish speakers. When we speak about bilingual, we want to be specific on the language, the targeted language that we are looking for. And previously, and just give you an opportunity to look at the resolution that the Board considered last month, this piece specifically talks about our equity statement focusing on us as a district, using equity as the thread that weaves throughout all the work that we do, the valuing of the diversity and focusing on treating everyone with dignity and respect. We then moved into the discussion of our changing demographics here in the district, specifically the change that has come about where our district now is fifty-two percent Hispanic, specifically looking at the Spanish-speaking community. We noted that thirty-three percent of our families have Spanish as their primary language and we are focusing on giving everyone the opportunity to engage in our community. And so we talked through the process of Spanish-speaking parents or guardians coming to the school and not having the ability to communicate with an administrator and oftentimes, you know, pulling on secretaries, clerks, sometimes even custodians or to interpret for the families, the guardians trying to have a discussion with the administration. And so what we want to be able to do is we do have some Spanish-speaking administrators currently in the district. We want to provide a stipend that would, number one, reinforce that we value that second language, that Spanish. And so we want to be able to retain them. We also want to recruit Spanish-speaking administrators to our district to ensure that we have the administration, administrators available to speak to our parents. And so you'll look on the second page where we did, as Mr. Adams spoke, we did look at the cost. I know at the last meeting, Ms. Westbrook provided a breakdown. We had another attachment. I don't think we have it here tonight. Let me see. No, it's not here tonight. Where we currently have 18 administrators, whether they're Assistant Principals, Associate Principals, or Principals in our district that are Spanish speakers. And so we would want to provide them a stipend and then use it to recruit and increase the numbers. When we worked out the cost to get, and the target was 33%, we want to be able to reflect the community that we have. So what would it look like? What would the cost be for us to hit within our strategic plan, that five-year mark? And we analyzed that. We know what it would cost. We know that it is an investment in, number one, retaining the 18 administrators we currently have. Out of 175 or so administrators right now, we have 18 that are Spanish speakers. And we want to retain and recruit so that we're able to provide equitable access to all families regardless the language that they speak.
So I guess, first of all, one, I feel a little bit blindsided because the agenda for the Board is agreed upon between the Board President and the Superintendent. And I had no knowledge, nor did I approve this for tonight's agenda. So one, it's sort of out of order. But I'm gonna move forward from there in stating that we are 52% Hispanic. I think it is imperative that we make sure that our students and our parents are able to communicate and receive all of the necessary services and opportunities within all levels of our administration. So when we look at 52% of our population now being Hispanic, where does that real need lie? Is that need lie with the Assistant Principal? Being able to communicate with the parent? Or the counselor? Or that teacher? I think throwing money at... I don't see where we benefit from this. Is this really where we need? I understand the intent. So I guess what I'm saying is I support the intent. I don't support this process or that it's going through Assistant Principals. I mean, who do the parents really talk to when they come in? Who do they really need to communicate with? Especially during a time when we're getting emails after emails and public participation, where we are struggling with getting people paid and their stipends appropriately. I think this should be part of the budget process. I think it should be more researched. And I am not in support of moving forward with this.
With that being said, I would... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
In talking with administrators in the district, they are hiring. And they are hiring, for example, I know in talking with the last one over at Westfield, had an Assistant Principal. And she told, knew nothing of this, what was coming up. And she is fluent in Spanish. So this wasn't something that she applied for because she thought she was going to get this stipend. And I think that others that would be applying would not be looking at, because I know I speak, I'm bilingual, but I'm not applying because I'm going to get this stipend. I'm applying because that's the move that I want to make in moving up in my career. And I'm fortunate enough to be bilingual. I don't think that teachers are not applying because we are not giving them this stipend. This is a two-way sword there. And I see it maybe as a problem for those that are not bilingual in terms of, I'm applying for that position. I received it. I'm not bilingual. I'm not getting the $5,500. I'm concerned about equity there in this resolution. And I feel like there would be some concerns with employees in our district by signaling out this one payment because of just being bilingual. I know we need them, and I appreciate them. We do need them. But I would hope that they would be applying because this is the position that they want and that they are aiming for.
I think the part, how you talked about the need. So anytime you have high need, incentive, incentive, support, attraction, whether it's high need for content, this happens to be a linguistic need. I believe Dr. Hill gave a statistic that our campuses that have bilingual administrators are more likely to be fully staffed. So that's something that can help our staff retention, communication with our families. And it also, like Dr. Hinahosa mentioned, the leaders should reflect our community. So this is an effort to make that happen as well.
So I think as we talked about this in the Equity Committee, what we, at least my perspective, I don't want to speak for everybody that was on the committee. But we're incentivizing a skill, not a demographic or a population. We're incentivizing people, whether they're Hispanic or not, who speak Spanish. Because that is a need for our district. It's a need actually for lots of districts. But particularly in spring with our percentages, that's what we need. So that's how I saw it, is incentivizing that skill. I don't happen to speak Spanish myself. I speak French. We don't need French-speaking people here. So we would not incentivize that.
Why APs?
Because of the need for an administrator. In some meetings, where it's not appropriate to have a janitor translating or another child translating, we need the person who is making the decision on the campus to do it. So it's APs and Principals, if I'm not mistaken. It's just administrators generally. I do like your idea about counselors.
Yeah, I mean, this is bad timing and completely out of order.
In terms of like the budget process?
And tonight's agenda, period. So I'm really struggling with it past that.
Madam President, I'd like to move that we table this and maybe have some discussions in closed session. Because I think that we have some protocol issues that we may need to discuss that are not, that we should not discuss openly.
Well, is it necessarily appropriate for this conversation to go to closed session?
The conversation as it relates to the process of it being on the agenda. Yeah. So with that being said, that's my first motion. And my second motion would be to table the discussion or the vote for the resolution of the Board Trustees of the Spring Independent School District as it relates to the incentive for bilingual pay.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Newhouse to table the item for a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Spring Independent School District to pay a stipend to recruit Assistant Principals, administrators. Is there any further discussion?
I do have a question. So there was some, the other reason I think there was urgency around was the timing of needing to recruit during the session. I understand if like there's an issue with, like where we are in the budget process, that makes sense to me. But if there is a workaround for that, I am still in support of the resolution. That's all I have.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make some comments. To Trustee Newhouse's point, when you mentioned equity, if we're really talking about equity, again, 52% of our demographic is Hispanic. 30% of those speak Spanish as the primary language in the home. I understand the concern about paying administrators because typically, you would think you get more value when you're talking about teachers. But this is also a cultural shift. We have to think of this differently because of the way the Hispanic culture is, the way the Hispanic culture functions. And so having as a, if you're a Hispanic-speaking family and you have personnel issues, you have things that are going wrong, you're not going to want to wait for central admin to send somebody from another campus to come and talk about an issue with your child. So from that perspective, there is that need. If we're talking about parent engagement and wanting to get families more involved with our campuses, they don't have that connection right now. And colloquial, what's the term? I'm trying to think. Coincidentally, the statistic that you were talking about, our campuses with Spanish-speaking admin are fully staffed. So if the majority of our schools are heading in that direction, I don't think we're doing our students a service. And I don't think we're being very equitable by not proposing, at least considering having that option for our families. So those are my comments.
I agree with the intent and the need, absolutely. And I know we have our neighboring districts that are much higher Hispanic-speaking than our own. And they have been able to adequately staff to meet the needs of that demographic without having to pay stipends in which to do that, which is what Trustee Newhouse's point was. But there's a motion on the floor to table this for another time. So I just wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to be heard before I call for a vote.
And we could, and I appreciate that, but I do want to rebut that. Our neighboring districts are established Hispanic populations. We're transitioning. So it would be a lot, it's a lot easier for those established districts to attract those personnel versus a newly transitioning district like us, where we are needing every tool possible to try to bring in everyone. So just wanted to bring the other side of the argument.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oh, no, I'm sorry. You had another comment? No, just to table it, we're gonna, we're gonna table it. The motion is to table.
I would actually like to rescind that motion and amend it. I'm not rescinding, I want to amend the motion and request that we table it and receive additional data to support the need for offering incentives to bilingual staff that we're recruiting. I think that's what I'm hearing, that the reason, the resounding theme is why are we as a district needing to pay, to offer an incentive? And that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, so that's a friendly amendment. Trustee Newhouse seconded. Do you accept that amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor to table this for a later time, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously.
And so what I would like to ask as it relates to that is maybe we can get a packet of information or some data that shows, that's comparable to maybe, you know, districts that are, that we normally compare ourselves to and kind of see what they're doing. Because this is not a, just a Spring ISD issue. Does that make sense, Dr. H?
It definitely makes sense. I do want to emphasize, I think, the point that Ms. Correa was making is that the difference between our district and our surrounding districts is our demographics has changed and is changing drastically at a much faster pace than our surrounding, immediately surrounding districts. Their either Hispanic population is not increasing or it is their primary or their largest. You know, they're at 90% or 70%. Where our surrounding districts that may be a similar size have like 18% or 20% Hispanic. Where we just in the last three to four years went from 42% to 52% Hispanic. So it's, we'll pull data. Just want to talk about that. But it's going to be very hard because there is not another fast-growing Hispanic district in our area that has transitioned that quickly.
But we do have fast-growing Hispanic population in the state of Texas. That's happening quite a bit and has happened over the years. And so that may not be where our neighboring district is today. But at the time, when they were going through the same process, you know, what worked for them? What worked best for them? What works best for us? Where, what is the correct formula to address our emerging, growing Hispanic population appropriately? So that we meet the needs of the parents, that the students are getting what they need, and that we're being fiscally responsible? And we aren't just throwing money at it. We need to really analyze it and think about what's really the need.
And I think also, we need to take in consideration staff morale. I think one of my colleagues mentioned it before because what we've heard in one of the concerns is, why are, why are we paying? You know, why should they get a stipend when you have other staff that work with different groups and do different things? So I really think that before we make a final decision on that, we need to look at it from a holistic perspective and see how it's going to impact us, you know, as a whole district.
So we'll look for that data. And I'll also, you know, because this came from or through the Equity Committee, I'll rely on our board members there to support. And I understand...
But it may, yeah. And if the data's not there, then let's go get it. Let's ask those parents who would they want to engage with? You know, let's make sure we're truly meeting, meeting the need.
We can definitely do that. I think Ms. Correa pointed that out is that the most important piece, especially for a Latino Hispanic culture, is they want to be able to speak to the administrator. When their child is being disciplined or sent to the DAEP or they have emotional, socio-emotional concerns or a problem with a teacher, they want to be able to speak to the administrator. But we'll definitely, I know that, you know, the Equity Committee, when they had this discussion, had a lot of thoughts around that. So we can definitely put together some surveys and collect data and see what other districts did maybe, you know, 20 years ago when they were facing this. So we'll bring that through the Equity Committee and then determine how to bring it back to the Board.
But when I look at the scenario that you brought forth, it's when, when they're having a problem or when their child's being disciplined and they need to address the administrator. To me, that's the minority. You know, who do I need to talk to on a day-to-day to understand the homework and the lesson and the curriculum and how I support my child at home? Not when I get in trouble, I need to talk to an administrator. Again, I think we need to look at what the true need is. All right, wasn't expecting that one. Our next item on the agenda is tonight's consent agenda. And so now I'll entertain a motion to approve and adopt all the items listed on tonight's... And so now I'll entertain a motion to approve and adopt all the items listed on tonight's consent agenda. Don't give all of them now with your motions. I need a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second. It's been tru, it's been moved by Trustee Newhouse and seconded by Trustee McDaniel's and Correa that we approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Did you have a question? I skipped you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. And I overlooked a very important committee. And so if I can get an update, um, from our Community and Engagement Committee that's led by our, uh, tribalist, uh, Trustee Hodges.
Ms. Hodges?
I'm not on, I'm on now. Thank you, thank you. Uh, as you know, the Community Engagement Committee, we've been busy, um, the last few weeks. Uh, as you're aware, we've been hosting our Building Bridges with the Board Series as a platform for parents and community members to kind of share their thoughts with us. Uh, because we definitely want to, um, make sure that we're able to communicate uh, and, um, convey our messaging and make sure that everyone, particularly the community, our parents, stakeholders are all engaged. So thank you to all of you who participated, our parents, community members and staff who participated in our table talks and building bridges. We really did receive some valuable input. So what we're doing right now as a committee, uh, we are going to convene and, um, look at the responses that we received and then determine what we are going to present to the leadership to see what actions we can take, things that can be done, maybe in the next thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, and then what we can, uh, look at for the next school year. And of course, you know, there were some issues and concerns that we, um, that are just things that we can't tackle. But the things that we can tackle that are, are relevant and are important, uh, to our kids, to our students and, uh, to our staff and to our parents, we're going to try to make those things happen and, and work, uh, with the leadership to make those things happen. And so again, we did receive some valuable input and, uh, and are reviewing that input. So, um, just again, we're just excited and we'll continue to host events like that. And what I, one of the things that we encouraged at the end of each session was that you, the next time we do this, we want to make sure whether it's with the, uh, staff or with the parents, that you bring someone and that you talk to them about, share the messaging, share how things, um, took, what took place and, and how it really was a safe space. Because we do know that those are, that's definitely some concerns, uh, that is a, of concern for our, uh, staff. Uh, that was some of the things that, that we heard as well. But we just want you to know that it is a safe space for us and it is fact-finding for us because we can't do what we need to do unless we have your guidance and input. Um, especially because you are working so closely with our kids and with our parents. And we just want to make sure that we're making good decisions. As you can see, it can be very stressful. I mean, just in this last thirty minutes, it's very, very, very stressful. And we want to make sure that we're making, uh, good decisions. Uh, with that, again, this weekend, we will have our, um, Girls Empowerment and Leadership Summit, as we talked about earlier. So we hope that you all will, uh, encourage that girls in your, in your life, in your community, in your church, uh, to log on and, um, register for that. Uh, it's going to be exciting. I'm glad to have, um, our trustee, Newhouse is going to be participating in that event. And so again, it's open to all middle and high school female students and it is on all of our social media platforms. You can sign up using the QR code. So please definitely share it. I would like for everyone to at least invite one, one of your friends' kids to attend so that we can make sure that, um, we're getting the word out and getting the support that we need. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Any questions for Trustee Hodges?
Just, just a comment. Uh, the, um, discussions we had with community members and staff members was very enlightening and very well organized. Uh, kudos to you and your committee, your Trustee Hodges. And the other thing I, concern I heard was, um, that these people have shared some of their concerns and their suggestions in past times and that just never went anywhere. I just want to assure these people that we got, um, uh, the, um, printed notes from every single, uh, group and we have been reading through them. And, uh, you have spoken to us.
Thank you. I did have a question, Trustee Hodges. We did this over like a month-long period. There was like four sessions, like over the course of a month. And I'm wondering about whether we could make this something that we do more regularly, like biannually, like get the pulse of the community.
Right. We're talking, we're gonna, we'll talk about that. Our, the, the committee will meet next Monday and we'll talk about moving forward and what we'll do right now because we have so much data. I really want us to sit down and think about what, uh, what are important things that we can get done quickly and, and kind of put it in a plan and present it to Dr. Henoza. And then she can, you know, get to work and talk to the cabinet and see, you know, what, what's doable. And then I definitely, one of the resounding things that we heard was that parents and the community want us to, um, communicate in, in different, different platforms. So one of the things we are thinking about is hosting something like this, possibly having more virtual events and things like that. But we're definitely gonna talk about it right now. I think with things that we have going on in the spring, I, I don't know if we'll be able to have another one during the spring. But definitely I think we have enough data to work and get us through and start preparing for the fall.
So I will say that this was really, um, innovative. And again, another thing that I'm really proud about this board in, in taking that leap and, uh, faith in, of Dr. Henoza and supporting us in that. And, uh, Mr. Winkley and making sure that we are staying within the parameters of the Open Meetings Act. So, which is why the, uh, meetings were hosted in the way that they were. Um, and so this is something that historically they've said boards, boards shouldn't do or boards don't do. Uh, but I think we're here to represent the committee, with community, staff. We were elected by them and I think being able to, uh, give them a, an opportunity to be transparent and be heard, um, I think is a very positive thing. Uh, but to Dr. Uh, to, uh, Mr. Trustee Adams and Hodges's point, we don't want it just to be something we did and that's it. We want, we want to identify those little hanging fruit, get that done right away. Look at the bigger, you know, ones to tackle, uh, and put together a strategic plan so that they can see there was value and there was action taken. Um, and so one of the things that was asked was that we host more, you know? So I do think, uh, there's a space for that. But I think we want to make sure that we, um, see, see through what we've already started, um, uh, before we start, you know, hosting additional ones. But great work.
Thank you to our committee members, uh, who support and our, uh, staff support. Uh, Ms. Carol, thank you for all that you do as well.
Because in our role, our role is governance and, and that's what we have to do. Make sure that we are doing just that. Um, so now the Board of Trustees will recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, five-five-one dot zero-seven-two, five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, five-five-one dot zero-seven-six and five-five-one dot oh-eight-two-one. No meeting will take place in the closed meetings. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in those closed meetings will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. Time is now ten-twenty-one PM. We are now reconvene the open session of the Spring ISD Board of Trustees. The time is now eleven forty-six PM. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve resolution of the matter styled Spring ISD versus Nicole Clark, Docket number zero-two-three-dash-LH-dash-eleven-dash-two thousand twenty-two, according to the terms discussed in closed session.
Have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Newhouse that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution of the matter styled Spring ISD versus Nicole Clark, Docket number oh-two-three-LH-eleven-two thousand twenty-two, according to the terms discussed in closed session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve resolution of the matter styled T E A, Docket number one-nine-one-dash-S E-dash-zero-two-two-three and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to execute an agreement according to the terms discussed in closed session.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution of the matter styled T E A, Docket number one-nine-one-S C-zero-two-twenty-three and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to execute an agreement according to the terms discussed in closed session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn tonight's, uh, Board of Trustees meeting.
Checking.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Adams to adjourn tonight's meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously and tonight's meeting adjurs at eleven forty-eight PM. Thank you, everyone.